Again, I'm not aware why that was the information that Diana was given. My understanding from working with the water manager was that they had already gone out to the tank and determined that the tank was full.
So, this is an area I'd really like to understand in more detail because Alpine Heights was without water in any building through no action of theirs, the water came back on. The only issue with the valve had to do with the valve that feeds the third floor of the north building. But how is it that the Alpine Heights could be without water and yet everything's full and no one does anything and all of a sudden there's miraculously some water in Alpine Heights?
I can't answer that question and that's why I hope that Johnny was here because he was actually out in the field working that problem. My understanding is that they did go around and they turned on additional valves to increase pressure. They had originally taken the pressure test on the valves in the area and they were low, but not low enough for the whole complex to go out of water. Normally in that area, the way that system runs, if there is a problem out at Muskie's, the first area that we would hear from about low pressure would be Country Club Estates. They are the furthest neighborhood on that system without any redundant lines. So, I'm not, I can't tell you how it miraculously came on. After they opened up some additional valves to increase the pressure redundancy coming in from the south and the west, they went back and did the pressure test and the pressure test came back the same.
This was after they had no water. The pressure test was not done when they didn't have water.
Like I said, Johnny's really the only one that can answer it on a minute-to-minute basis. I was getting updates from him about every two hours.
This was on the 25th Tuesday when they had no water?
No, that was on Wednesday.
Yes, so I'm talking about Tuesday, the 25th. So, it'd be good to...
So, I was not aware. No one had notified me, not anyone from the dispatch, no one up front that was receiving the calls and not even from Johnny, had notified me that Alpine Heights was out of water. The phone call that I received from you at seven in the morning was the first notice that I had and then following up with Johnny to figure out, okay, where did we go wrong?
So, I'd like to understand that some more if you're able to. Because your message back was to all of council, the city had nothing to do with Alpine Heights being without water. It's not clear to me that's a true statement and that better understand if we help know what happened, not on the 26th, but on the 25th. But I know what happened on the 26th, there was a valve that was turned in order to get the water pressure and it was not turned back on. Okay, because I've been helping hold the valves. So, what's our total capacity for water to deliver to the city, do you know?
With all the wells combined...
What's our capacity? What are we pumping on a daily basis nowadays?
I think it varies. It varies on the peak. I know that we've got a million gallon tank that is never at capacity. So, there's room to add capacity to that. Tanks, most of the tanks rarely run or store more than eighty percent of the water that they're designed to store.
Okay, so, last night her data wise, low in Alpine is using 1.2 million gallons of water a day. The max we use is 1.8 million gallons of water a day. So, what I understand then, this city does not have capacity to store a full day's of water. So, the only way we're able to deliver water to the city is we have to constantly be pulling out of wells to be able to meet the need for the full day.
On a high peak day, yes.
On a high peak day, which last week was, on the 25th and 26th. I think we really need to understand what our strategy is because if we don't have the well online and the water department guys are having to go turn on and turn off water manually, then I think we need to have a strategy that talks about what do we do when we can't meet capacity and we may have to go on to water hours or to stop water loans.
The first step in our conservation plan whenever we hit a high peak day is to reduce water within the organization. So, that goes back to the parks department, not watering and not using water in that sense. That's the first step. TCQ has a standard where if it hits a certain percentage, that's when we notify the public that we have to go into its phase B of our conservation plan. And again, in keeping in touch with Johnny on that, during that time period and actually early on, earlier before that weekend, there were some times and he said, you know, "We're getting close. We're getting close. We may have to issue a notice." And he keeps an eye on them and if we have to issue the notice, then we will issue the notice. But our conservation plan, the way it is written right now and has been approved at the state level, doesn't require that notice or that level of conservation to kick in until the tanks hit a certain percentage of capacity or lack of capacity.
Do you guys not know what that is?
Off the top of my head, I don't know what that is. It depends, I guess, on which tank it is that's failing. We did have, not too long ago, I say not too long ago, maybe six, seven months ago, we had a leak on Gaijillo and a substantial amount of water was lost and we had to issue the conservation notice at that point in time. And I think that lasted less than 24 hours even at that point in time. So, it's not just a summer peak time. A leak can cause that. Some other kind of unusual event can cause that to happen. But to answer the specific question as to what happened on the 25th, when part of it got water and part of it didn't, I think Johnny's the only one that can answer that question.
So, would you please take the action to go look at that? So, I sent you the email. It's got the details because instead of nine fifteen on the 25th, no one in Alpine Heights had water. No one. Not only the third floor, no one had it.
Well, and again, my understanding from Johnny getting back with him is he said it was all onsite.
And so, we have, in my ward, of 160 residents who have a completely different view of that. City says, no responsibility. You say, city delivered everything. Somewhere there's an issue and it's really important to understand that.
Counselor, I was there the day Johnny was taking the readings.
On the 26th, yeah. I'm not talking about that. The 25th day before.
He did test forty pounds at the meter.
I don't dispute that. It's the 25th.
Okay.
The day before, when there was no water. So, I don't dispute the 26th. I was out there as well, just the day before.
So, to help you understand, one of the features of this KDA system is the trending. If you can see the spring there. And so, I actually have an X-trace mode to where you can go back to the exact time when an event happens and see it on your trend here. I can't tell the date and time that's up there right now from here, but any of your pumps, your storage stations, it's all in the trend so you can pull those reports and go back and look at what your air levels are, if there's some pressure involved. And, you know, if we're recording this, it's in there.
So, if this is tank level going on May and the 25th...
Exactly.
June 25th, this shows the tanks...
Let me get over here where I can actually see what we're looking at.
So, this is tank level in feet. So, zero to seventeen and a half, there was a spike. This shows the tanks are at zero.
Yeah, so, what can happen in that situation is you could have a clogged pressure transmitter. You know, there could be different reasons common to be zero or the tank could have actually been zero. So, you can go back and also you can look at the actual wells themselves and you can look at the trends on the wells. And so, in that tank area, you go and do the X-trace. So, if you ever end the SCADA system, look at it, you simply right-click and pulls up a mode, you go to the mode and you go to X-trains.
So, what I hear you saying is you can go pull up data out of the SCADA system...
That shows you exactly what...
Shows exactly what the tank levels were on the 25th. Is that great to pull that out?
So, basically, right now Johnny has access to it. I don't know if we can get you access to it, but there's limited accesses. You can actually log in, so we can set, we could set up the mic or whoever would...
We're not administrator. That's not our, that's Jessica on the table. Nice, pull the data, Jessica. Go ask Johnny to pull the data on what happened on the 25th.
And if you need assistance with that, we can pull data for you and help you out with that, you'll be able to report. So, that's what the SCADA system's there for, is for incidents like this. So, you can go back and look at, okay, well, this tank was low, this well wasn't running or this well wasn't running. It helps you determine and figure out what happened and remedy the situation.
Great.
Not necessarily fix it, you know, because it happened in the past, but understand what happened and come up with preventative measures to prevent it.
So, I'm after, about 150 citizens set up without water, one of them's sitting in the bathroom here and he didn't have any water. And seven employees who live there, well, didn't have any water.
So, what happens when Johnny's not available? When, I mean, if he's on vacation and something like this happens? Who's under him? Who takes over?
It depends on who's on call. There are employees within his department that are on call, have access to the system and are basically tasked with Ethan and I on the system and the pumping and the tank levels.
And you would have access to this, right?
Yes, they have access. And also, to this day, my phone, whenever you have an alarm, it's set up where I actually get a text message whenever you get an alarm on your system. So, me and a couple more people from the company, whenever we set us the SCADA system up, typically we put ourselves on the alarm notifications so that we can kind of oversee what's going on and case is something that we're working on that's alarming. And I know back when Jay was here, you'll have one employee that would, in the middle of the night, I'd get, you know, till five in the morning, I'd get fifty alarms going off where he's turning pumps on and off and on and off and just because he was not trained. And because we could see that and see the clicking action that he had done, we were able to correct it and make him a better operator. So, it's really good training.
So, Jessica, you provided in the package, I'm not sure why, but the indication that the city needs to allocate 7.5 million dollars to go upgrade our wastewater plant and our water system. My question to you is, what are you going to share with council what that's all about? Because I don't recall ever seeing the report associated with this 7.5 million dollars.
Well, this is what goes back to Water Development Board and it is a duplicate of the same information that we submitted last year. The city was allocated an opportunity or provided an opportunity to apply for some funds and unfortunately we missed out on that application. So, we just kind of repeated this for this fiscal year and hopefully we'll get invited again to submit for some funding from them to take care of this. But it covers the same things that we talked about last year. These are old outdated mechanical items. One of the things that Steve is working on right now is replacing the electrical system or not the electrical system, the line. I guess you're going to work a quote to replace an electrical line?
Yes. On the upper and lower hill wells, there's a, basically someone had run a telephone wire with 120 volts through, struck through a bunch of this heat and stuff and it's, you know, it's a hazard. And so, it doesn't work and it's a hazard. So, we're working on getting a quote to get that fixed.
So, this addresses a lot of like some of those mechanical things that were not upgraded that hopefully will make the technology more efficient for us. And again, because some of these wells have been down, we had people out cleaning the tanks and there was an issue again about a month ago with the tank cleaners, I guess, I don't want to say interfering with the sensors and so the reads had, some of the sensors had to be reset. And it's just kind of been one after the other. So, my, you know, my looking at kind of what happened last week is Johnny said, well, we've been out to the tanks, we've been out to the pumps, we've been here, we've been there. We're not quite sure why it happened. It goes back to the technology works when the equipment it's connected to is reliable. When that's not reliable, then it makes the technology kind of questionable on their end and what they're seeing. And this is, this is why these improvements are needed. This is probably 20 to 30 years of improvements and maintenance that have been deferred on both of these systems that need to be addressed. Otherwise, we'll have more days where the water department is kind of running around trying to figure out problems that should not be that complicated to figure out.
How did we miss the opportunity to fly to the ranch?
We missed a publication in the newspaper.
And so, given we're talking, you added up this at 7.5 million dollars, this is probably worthy of a workshop and given the issues we have with water and the age, it's probably worth all of a special city council workshop we'll talk about on our water wastewater system strategy of...
Well, and I think it'll be important, once the Water Development Board delivers its intended use plan and provides the rankings and funding availability. Because granted, we were not going to get all 7 million and so we'll have to pick and choose and decide which things are the priority for those systems. You know, if you're Mike Mercedes and you've been working 24/7 with two other guys since Memorial Weekend, they're all priority. But again, that's a decision that council will need to make once we know what that funding offer is going to be from the Water Development Board.
And will the Water Development Board make their decision?
The draft IUP is supposed to be, well, it's usually out in June. They're running behind, so the latest information that I received is they were looking at mid-July for the draft to go out. Depending on if there's any changes or not, the board itself will approve in August and then invitations will go out in September and applications will have to be submitted by October.
Okay, that's what we hope, that's that one.
Mr. Colas, I understand you have a question, but you're not on the agenda. You'd have to go through your councilman or the city secretary.
Although there was a question for the public servant.
No, information and action items for the public. Okay, information and action items is for the public to make their comments.
Just on that.
Okay, just on that. Okay, one action item, I'm sorry. But that's only time. You'd have to go again to the city secretary, give them a docket or through your councilperson.
Yes, please.
And that's Mr. Stevens. Okay? I'm not trying to cut you off or be rude or anything, but we do have to follow.
Very good.
Any more questions? Okay, see you now. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Item E.
We have, let's discuss staffs with evaluations and pay increases. The H is goes to Mrs. Golego's item that's further on the agenda as well. This is the spreadsheet that I have compiled by going through each of the employee files manually that shows the dates that they were hired. If they're new hires, they'll have 90-day evaluations, any wage adjustments, annual evaluations that came with wage adjustments, cost of living increases, and then previous here.
So, it doesn't provide any listing of evaluations of the lines paid. How would this one know if there was actually a performance appraisal and evaluation done?
So, you'll see the Collins's annual. That's, they received an appraisal, an evaluation.
So, every person on this list, if it's listed under annual, they receive a performance evaluation at the same time? Is that the conclusion that one draws from this?
Well, the dates on there indicate when their evaluation is done. So, for example, if you go to, John, well, the very first one is a police officer who's just hired in April. So, you'll see that there's nothing on there. So, he's actually due for a 90-day this month.
Okay.
Well, early August. The next employee has been here longer and so they have their wage adjustment done in December.
So, let's take for example Megan Antrim. Okay? As I look across, she's well past 90 days, she's been here a while, 2013. It shows no wage adjustment after that. It shows no annual. It shows a COLA award was awarded on January 18, 2019 of a dollar fourteen cents. And then the annual before that shows 1016 or 10617. Does that mean her last performance appraisal was on 10617?
Yes.
Okay. And so, that's how we read the chart. If there is nothing listed under annual, then I'll just use, go through it down in the same. So, Megan's not out of performance appraisal for a while. I'm just trying to learn how to read this thing. So, here's another one. I'm just down to Andrew Chavez, hired in August of 2017. Got a wage adjustment that is in October of 2018. Was that associated with an annual appraisal or just a wage adjustment? Because then I look across and says, if I follow the logic of the form, it says the last annual adjustment, which just doesn't seem to make sense, it shows on 12317 before he was hired. That doesn't seem to make sense.
On 113? That's 11.
I'm looking at Andrew Chavez.
Yeah. So, he got his 90-day on November 2017.
Yeah. Go over to the 1, 2, 3, the Collins's annual after COLA.
It's 32217.
32217, but he wasn't hired until 10 or 81017. How's that true?
Well, probably a typo.
Okay, so, this is pretty hard to read and understand. Okay, at least I understand it. I know there's a bit of analysis on it, but it says you have some people that have not gotten performance appraisals either and... I don't know if it's inadequate or if it's more...
I don't know. I mean, I need to look at it. It's very hard to read.
Well, it was provided to the city secretary on 11 by 17. I guess for purpose of the packets, it was shrunk down to letters.
I need to do coffee, it's bigger.
This is, I mean, come on. Yeah, you can provide us that data if you're prepared.
Just one last column. What most of it shows is that most employees receive COLA just slightly, less than three and a half percent. That's the one item that's fairly consistent throughout. But even it, it's, it's got some more work to do. Would you have anything else, Mr. Young? This is your items for that.
It is. I know. It's very hard to read.
Do you want to get a bit of your comments, also?
I do. Because I'll have it from our council.
You read them all right. Okay, thank you. Does that apply?
Okay. Let's go ahead and go to item F.
Discuss the updated budget calendar for the adoption of the fiscal year 2020 budget. So, the dates you see on here have been reviewed by Nick and so he's confirmed that we would meet all of the legal requirements under the state code.
So, today is July 2nd. Says regular city council meeting will approve charter accounts, fund balance reports, budget amendments, present preliminary budget. I don't recall seeing any of that on the agenda.
You're absolutely right.
So, clearly we're not going to meet these things. So, what's the hell out?
Well, I think the, as we discussed before, as I'm getting the information from our director of finance, we can provide it to you. I would say she's probably about 50% with the preliminary budget. And you can workshop those July 16, 17, or you can work them August 6th and 7th, but there's still sufficient time to have the budget and the tax rate adopted. And again, you know, the calendar is something we put together. We always push it in additional time at the end of the period just in case issues come up. And so, normally mid-July, end of July is when you would, most cities start workshopping because the appraisal role, certified appraisal doesn't come out until July 25th. So, those accurate appraisal numbers you're not going to have anyways until August. So, while those items were not submitted in time to be put on the agenda, the, still think we'll be able to come to those existing meetings as well as start talking about the preliminary budget.
So, why do we even spend time putting this calendar? Council approved it. The reason for not having a budget at the meeting on June 18th was that Megan, is what you stated, wasn't available. That was an interesting debate for anyone who wants to watch. Now, the video, you can watch from the June 18th meeting back and forth because Megan said, oh, she did what she was asked to go do. We came in on that meeting, June 18th and said, well, we'll have it again on, be ready on July 2nd. And we don't have it on July 2nd. We in council here talked about doing it on July 16th and 17th. The 17th isn't reflected here. Frankly, I struggle with why we should have confidence in this latest piece of work.
I am relying on the information as Megan provides it to me.
So, the city charter says you're responsible for the budget.
Yes.
And unfortunately Megan's not here to be able to talk about it, but she was here two weeks ago. Is Megan back there?
Yes.
So, Megan, what's your perspective on where we're standing?
As I get the information, I put it in the system and forwarded to her. I got the wages today.
And who did you get this information from?
From Jessica. She got it from the departments and it was given to me last week and this week.
So, this schedule, clearly a lot has to happen for, to be able to get this in. What's the plan?
I don't know what to tell you. We'll, you know, work for that July 16th, try to have all this other stuff done. There weren't a lot of changes to the charter accounts. I still haven't seen a fund balance report other than what came out in the audit. Budget amendments still have not been done in order to start working on the preliminary budget. The calendar, back in April, was when we started working on putting the calendar together. Actually Cynthia was there. We went over the budget, we set the dates, agreed that Megan was also present, but if you noticed, even on May 7th, you didn't have any amendments on May 7th. And the rest of that was not able to be done and so it's been behind since then.
So, who's accountable for putting the budget together?
Well, compiling it all would be me. However, the information I get, again, I rely on the director of finance to provide that information to me. So, if I don't have access to the accounting system and I rely on the director of finance to provide that, to make those updates, present them to me and then move them there.
Does only one person have access to that? Does only one person have access to that?
To the actual accounting system, I believe there's four people that do. But to certain aspects of it, only one person has full access to all of it.
And that is?
The director of finance.
That is, I'm sure, to maintain because who has authority to sign checks?
Myself and the city secretary, the chief of police, and the cabinet chief.
So it would be very unwise in a system where you're going to have checks and balances to provide someone who has the authority to write the checks also having access to the accounting system. Otherwise, you have huge issues of balance controls, and we would fail our audit.
Well, we don't have the failure audit, but it would make a note of it.
We would have it enough. And this city's had enough financial issues in the past. So who has the next action to do what that leads to the next meeting on July 16 and 17? And is there a detailed plan about what that's about?
As I'm getting the information and reviewing it, that's how we'll be able to present it.
So we have no idea.
I cannot rely on certain information being due by a certain date.
We'll have that accounted for.
So if the council mandates that you get the information by a certain date, can we have it happen?
That would be assuming, of course, that the information is all provided to me by the director of finance.
But so if we mandate it?
So everything... So all the budget material, Megan and I need you out to just... I want to understand this. You receive all the information directly from the department heads? Or what I just heard you say was, you need information from Jessica, who just got today on wages?
No. The spreadsheet for the wages has been available on the shared drive for a couple of weeks already. She sent me budget worksheets. It didn't have any salary information, so I sent her an email letting her know this wage information is available on the shared drive. It needs to be inputted and then reset to me. As far as the debt schedules and certain other information, revenue forecasting, that all comes from the director of finance. She's the one who sees the bank statements and knows what the cash flow is for the city. That's not provided to me. So that has to be inputted by her. The expenses, some of the departments went directly to her with their expenses. Most of them, I believe, are done. The only ones that I know that are still pending is the water, the sewer, and the hotel occupancy. Those are the only three that are still pending on expenses. But everything else is generated from the director of finance. The department heads do not get their revenue sheets and say, oh, I think this year I'm going to make a million dollars. That is all done through forecasting, evaluation of prior years, and projecting out future years. And that's the role of the director of finance.
May I have a comment?
That's the first I've heard.
Yeah. Because I'm sure she didn't do it last year.
No, you helped with the budget last year. And the year before that, Eric and I sat down. And the year before that, it was Eric and I.
So last year, we managed to get a budget. And this year, we don't seem to be able to get a budget. And so you're saying it's all made its own?
Nope.
Oh, then first issue.
I would say that the current climate within the organization and the operation of this city is severely dysfunctional.
We agree with that.
There's your answer.
And that needs to stop.
It certainly does.
It hurts the city.
It certainly does.
Yep. And someone's got to take the accountability.
Everybody needs to do their job function in order for the city to run properly. And that's why I said the council needs to mandate the timeframe for all the courses to be in. So we can move forward, and it's going to be happening.
Doesn't make it a difference, where?
Why is that?
We know the schedule before last time. You said that's the schedule.
But I'm saying now we should have all the information in there by a certain deadline so we can move on. You know, we're going to have to work together, like it or not.
Well, we can't do the administrative work. Okay, well, we'll see what happens.
All right. Move along to item B.
I understand that the bikes and the racks are already in. I was just wondering when they would be outrapped through from the kids to you.
I did get an email from Chris Rusio, who had taken the lead on that. And he was working with another gentleman here locally on locations. We did meet with Chris Weber at TenStot to find out where... how close we could get to TenStot right away on these bike racks. Chris did send me an email in that he is hoping to have all of these locations identified here shortly. He is waiting to meet with Eddie just to verify certain locations. I don't know that the bike racks are in. I know the bicycles are here, but I don't know that the bike racks are in.
I understood they weren't in yet.
I have not heard that they are in. So he's... So he was the one who's taking the lead on that. And his email has indicated that he's just waiting to meet with Eddie to be able to identify the final location so that we can get all these bike racks ordered.
Council must wait on... You just would try to input item E. So when you get the spreadsheet, will you read it?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So you want to put all that in?
Yeah. I mean, and I also want... like the installation of... by the evaluations for...
Let's get the spreadsheet to them. Let's go ahead and move on to item I. Council Stevens.
Yeah. So what brought this out was the expiration of the gas contract that we had with West Texas Gas. We were able to get that resolved with only a short gap in our contract coverage. Not because of... well, because some of us decided to go with it, some of us wouldn't. So I had asked for our complete list of all the contracts over the next 18 months, which was in fact divided. So that raises some questions in my mind. We have that contract with West Texas Ambulance that will expire in four months. When can we expect to see an update to that and the strategy associated with West Texas Ambulance?
Well, the city in the contract has the optional three-year extension. I think as we get into the budget discussion and that line item, then that would be when we would start to discuss whether or not we want to extend that budget or extend that contract, or if we wish to terminate that contract, not take the option for the three-year extension.
So you'll talk to include that in the budget process. West Texas Gas, part of the resolution written, was that by the 15th of October, we'd come back with a plan about how to go forward and be able to compete future contracts. Where are we on that section?
I have not done any work with that.
Do you plan to have a plan by the 15th of October?
Well, I don't have the signed contract. I don't know where the signed contract is. I just started working on that.
Who's responsible for that?
Depends on who... Normally, your city secretary is the one who keeps track of all of your contracts and your records. In this case with this, Cynthia explained that she did not have all the copies of the contracts with her. And so this spreadsheet actually comes through the finance director.
Okay. So my question stands?
When can I get a signed copy of the contract? I'll have it in the morning.
Oh, good.
Good. Okay. So giving you the contract in the morning, which frankly, the strategy doesn't need the signed contract. It would be good if we had that in the records. So it'll come to May of next year when we are about to plan. Do you have the strategy that leads to achieving a plan on the 15th of October?
We've got to add West Texas Gas into this.
So it is right on there. It is line number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, line 17, page 1.
Oh, there it is.
Yes. I actually read this one. And the price is correct. And expires May 30, 2020. Back to my question. This contract was put in place for a year to give us time to develop a strategy so we can look at how we might go compete to get a better gas rate to support the citizens' valve line. Because after gas, it's almost a point they can't give away. And so we talked about, as you recall, when you're at the resolution that on the 15th of October, you would come back with a strategy that council could review to look at how we could compete. That's my question. Just have that in your mind. That's your question is?
Yep.
Great. Good. Thank you.
We're finding out where that valve is in the next this point.
Looking for that to be part of the strategy. I've talked to... I've talked to E.T.P. I know what the valve is.
Because I went by their sun. And I think it's along with that right past the curb. It's at Suntory Field.
The key issue is, what's the plan to get the gas better to our head? I know a couple of pretty different strategies about how to do it yet. 15th of October. So... And the water sewer assessment with Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper that we... the council approved in early February. I see the contract was signed on the 6th of... of the 4th of June, rather. It's nice to see. I'll wait till we get later on, at least. It's nice to see what's happening. That's all I have. Thank you very much for this.
Great. So we'll move to J. City manager. So... Oh, actually, that's yours.
That's mine. We had a number of discussions about the plan to fill two vacancies. The one where After left in December, and then Chris left in December as well. He's been out of the public works director and a public works director for six months. What is the... Oh, we have some information here. I don't know what we're looking at, so...
So several weeks ago, we interviewed one candidate for the public works director position. Yesterday, we interviewed the second candidate. And after kind of going over the experiences and checking with their references, I'm very comfortable in making an offer to each of these two gentlemen to take over the position of public works and public utilities at their asking salaries.
So the position of utilities director is to fulfill all the requests that we have in the position description?
He currently does not hold a TCQ license. However, with his education and his previous experience, he would be able to test at a C and B license in lieu of experience. So he would... Within a year, he would be able to have all the necessary licenses.
So what I see here is you have candidates. And who all... Who all decides you up on this table is not the source?
Just the mayor.
Just the mayor. And so why is it just the mayor gets invited? Well, but you don't get a vote on it.
I know it.
Okay? So you get invited, but the rest of us don't. That seems...
Makes him unbiased.
Unless for what? Because we got to make a decision about whether or not he's going to be good candidates or not, so...
But he doesn't have a... He just have a vote. So his objective opinion limits.
Just the council on this.
Well, we can't make a motion on this today, so we'll have to have this on our future agenda item. And are there resumes or other documents available on these two individuals that you can apply to council to decide this piece of paperwork?
I can... I have them available if council wants to come in and view them. Consider confidential personal information.
I guess I'd also like to... Are there within that information, are there reference checks that have been done to find out, to get some background on these two individuals?
Yes.
Okay. And when will council have the opportunity to meet with them?
It's after they're hired.
So either one, and I tend to be more of a go for anyone until I've had the opportunity to meet with them, particularly given...
One of them was in South Texas. The other one, South, South Texas. And the other one was in Houston.
Okay, so...
So is council offering at this point to pay their mileage to make a second trip up here? At that hotel?
So far, we've struck out of getting utility directors here.
I think we get somebody hired. That's what it takes. So I'm happy to say this to that.
Well, you can't make a motion. We're in a formation discussion.
Formation discussion, yeah. It'll have to be a...
A future agenda. Future of...
So on July 16th, you want to vote as to whether you want to pay their mileage and expenses to travel up here for a second trip? And then maybe the next agenda approve them?
I support that. Because it seems like forever. And our process is really slow and lingers as a whole. And that's why I've been asking for four months on these two topics. And I'm glad we finally have some candidates. That's terrific. A long time.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything else on that one.
Okay. Teddy, that's yours.
So Mick, this is yours and my item. We had a resolution that council passed, 2019-0603, regarding the disannexation of property requested by property owners at Old Marathon Road. I know you've done some research on it. We've talked about it separately. Would you like to share with council what you've got thus far on that? Or would you like me to?
Well... The issue really that we need to address is how we handle... If the disannexation's adopted, finally adopted, how we handle the taxes that have been paid by the property owners in the disannexed area? And under the statute, they're entitled to a refund of the difference in the taxes they actually paid and the expenses the city has expended to provide services to the area. The only way we know of around that provision is to have the property owners waive their entitlement to that refund. As you can tell, that kind of a calculation isn't easy, but it would have to be done to comply with the statute upon disannexation. Also, as I think I mentioned to you last time, the disannexation of the property can't be pieced me while it's a disannexation of the entire tract that was originally annexed, regardless of whether every property owner in the tract wishes to be disannexed or not. There's also a provision that if the council's decision to disannex is based upon not providing adequate services to the area, and that's the grounds for the disannexation, the property cannot be reannexed for at least 10 years. So all those things have to come into consideration So, all those things have to come into consideration before you finally adopt the ordinance disannexing.
Now, thanks, Mick. And so I've gone and talked to the property owners. They are willing to waive the taxes. That's not a problem. But to your point, that'd have to be computed to go figure that out. I think that's the lesser of all issues. It's number 10, which is much more significant, because I have the documents associated with the annexation with Cynthia on that. And there is significantly more than just Old Marathon Highway that was annexed at that time. It includes everything on 67 on the road, basically from Old Marathon Road out to, you know, to Garrett Lane, because all that came in at that time. There is mixed emotions on the part of the owners of those lands, and I would think there'd be mixed emotions on the part of us in city council, because there's a lot of tax revenue there, which leads to the third item. In my view, I think the onus rests on the city to go spend some time with those residents to go figure out how we resolve their issue, because their complaint is, we can't get any city services, so what's the city doing about it? And I think, Jessica, that's an area you need to go work. She's the one responsible for providing city services out there, because that's their big frustration. They call, and you shove them to the sheriff's department, you shove them back to APD, you shove them off the sheriff's department. They can't get any service, they can't get trash service, and we are not making any room. So in my view, this is an action for you to go off and work. And I have, in my context, happy to facilitate discussion, but in my view, that's the next step to go work before considering how we can do that disannexation process. Make sense to Nelson? Make sense to you, Jessica? Okay? So that's the update on that side. Sure, we'll go back to item K. Sorry about that, since I screwed up. Item K, so let's talk about where we are on the, those two contracts, Park Hill Smith and Cooper, that was signed on the 4th of June. I quickly pulled the contract, because we didn't have an answer last week, that says how long was the delivery report, it's 120 days at KSA. So, Jessica, what's the plan? What's going on?
Well, they're the ones actually designing the plan. The timeline, the, on the street study, all the field work has been completed. They reviewed 867 segments of road for condition, and they're 20% complete in importing and translating the field work into their paper system. And this was from them last week. So they'll be working on data entry and developing the actual report leading up to their delivery date at the end of July. On the water side, they have received, and were actually successful in receiving a lot of the mapping information from previous engineers that worked for the city, so they're in the process of compiling all of that and having that prepared for us in GIS form. They're looking at having all of that mapping done by the 17th. They will be down at the end of July, beginning of August, and again, they're going to try to coordinate with KSA when they get here, as well as incorporating the intended use plan from water development board, the funds we requested into that needs assessment. And so that's where they're at.
So, as you recall, what drove all of this? It was my asking about, so when are we going to give the roads first? That's what this is all about. Because we put a contract together in February, council approved, that was the intent, because we want to understand our underground infrastructure. So we, before we start tearing up the above ground, we wouldn't tear up the above ground, asphalt it, and add go up the dig underground. So ultimately, what's the schedule of milestones for the scope of work to get the roads fixed? Because regarding this paving season number two, so where's the paving schedule, and when can we expect to see that?
Well, they'll have that preliminary one at the end of July.
But if we don't have the Park Hill Smith and Cooper done until the end of October, how will we have a plan in July? I'm just trying to.
As I've said before, there is not infrastructure under every street. And Eddie and the water department, they have gone out, looked at these streets that are obviously in really bad shape. Some of them, we get phone calls on regularly to identify, okay, what is there, what isn't there? And working that, kind of from that aspect, that these are the streets that don't have infrastructure, these are the streets, or the streets that have infrastructure that is still within its lifespan, so that they can start working those streets. He has, he has brought in two contract employees to help with the equipment, and they have been spending some time training and operating the equipment with the new staff. And Eddie's plan at this point is, he has ordered material, and as soon as they get, he actually provided me the list of what he got, and I did not care to bring anything with me. And so they're going to try to do as many streets through the training process with these contract employees as they can. And I said, I asked him, where are you planning on starting? And he said, he said on Fourth Street between Uvalde and Del Rio.
I think we passed it already, knowing by their last Saturday.
Yeah. Yeah. That's the one that they're going to, they're going to start on that one, and they're going to do these smaller segments where they know there is no infrastructure underneath. I think all they're waiting for right now is to just get final release dates done on those sections, so that that's what they'll have to do. Their maintainer contractor can only work, I think he told me, 40 hours, or 50, no more than 50 hours a month. So they're going to try to do some preliminary work and get that done. That way, that operator is just out there on those days when he's really needed out there.
I understand you have a question, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Is this actual paving or just more patching?
You're not on the, you're not on this particular part of the agenda?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. You'd have to talk to whoever your councilperson is.
I'll quit speaking with her.
You can talk to me then. That's fine. No problem.
So, so when, so Jessica, what you just said was, we have known for some time what roads do not have water or sewer underneath them, correct?
I would say we have not known for some time. The list of streets was given to the water and sewer department so that they could identify the streets where they knew there was not infrastructure.
Okay, so I'll rephrase it. We know there are a number of streets, whether it was yesterday, or three weeks ago, or today, streets that have paving but no infrastructure beneath them, correct?
Yes.
Okay? And we also know, and we'll certainly wait to get the information from KSC.
KSA.
Or KSA, but we also have a pretty good sense about what roads need to get worked, because citizens have been calling for some time and says, hey, fix my road. And has anyone done an overlay between those two?
Between which two?
The two that says, we know there's roads that need to get fixed because people have called, and we know where there are blocks and streets where there's no infrastructure that needs to get worked.
No.
We don't know that. And we've not done the overlay.
No.
Okay? So, because we represent citizens and get calls all the time, when can we expect to see a list of that? So when we get calls, when it says, ah, it's on the list, or we even have to get calls to put a map out there and says, as you just talked about, Del Rio's going to get worked on. When can we expect to see that list?
There is a list that we have generated. I would hesitate to give you that list. Eddie's reluctant in making any kind of commitment to number of blocks or streets that can be done this year. This is what causes that hesitation. Because he does not know with his new crew and with his contract employees whether or not he would be able to do five blocks or 10 blocks. The list is there, it's been reviewed, but he's hesitant to say, this is for sure what I'm going to get done this year.
I know he has a priority about the highest ones, correct? Top to bottom, let's say one out of 10?
He has the, well, again, he does not want to commit to doing any specific number of blocks.
I'm not asking that. He knows his priority, he's going to do one, or half, or a third, and then go on to the next one, and then the next one. Is that, and that sounds like him making an unreasonable request to share those priorities and blocks.
I'll ask.
That'd be great. And it'd be nice to see it, but it's the city council, and you have that list, so all of council will be taken out of that. And since DSC will have their mapping done on the 17th of July, KSA's already done the 867 blocks, and they're 27% complete, you can expect to see it in the J91 for information, so we can all, we're not worried.
Formal one, three, action items, can't be like reset and effects, include this one coming from. After toll, actually, I understood that a temporary meeting, citizens allowed to comment within two, three minutes, after being called upon by the mayor. Citizens are required to state their name, and the board acquits every side. Party will be given to the citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property in the city limits of Alpine are allowed to speak if there's time available. And I think that's what we need to do.
Yes. I move that we take the action to allow, or allowing the city manager to represent the city of Alpine in newspaper, interviews, radio talk shows, town hall meetings, press conferences, special city events.
Is there a second? Okay, both of you, ladies, second, and this is question.
So.
Yes, sir.
Our process that we have documented in ordinance says that when we take action items or resolutions, we document what those are. I don't see any resolution here that mediates or stipulates what specifically you're asking. And I'm the one that documented the resolution that included that activity and have that as available in the action items. It certainly would be nice to see that resolution written down, which includes whereabouts and all that information. So you'll find anything against it, whether I destroy it or not, because that's just not the way we do business.
If I may still continue with comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think it is important that the city manager provide to participate in media events to report and share information regarding accomplishments, present and future plans, as well as other ongoing affairs associated with the management of the city. That is highly important. And in this, there's a fine example of what we just discussed regarding the KSI street assessment. If the city manager is allowed to, press releases from her office to the public, they could be kept informed, as we are occasionally regarding those plans and projects. I also believe that the city of Alpine need to know that their city manager. I have had the privilege of attending Texas Municipal League of conferences and regional forum meetings, with basically small cities of the same size as Alpine, a tax base as well as population. We get together at, at least once every, once a year at the big quarter. And at these conferences and the regional meetings, I have seen Jessica networking, engaging with other city colleagues, colleagues from other cities, and it is very encouraging, very encouraging. Because amazing enough to see members of other cities involved in government work, mayors that are female, very young age, between 40, 35, maybe 45, council members as well within the same age, and all cooperating with a common vision and goal to get things done for the benefit of the cities. And Jessica comes from that type of environment, where it's, and she can bring for us more ideas, and because I believe she is of our hearts on ideas, and this, of course, due to her, her working in rich cultural historical sites like Clint, San Luis Obispo, and El Paso. We should allow her to share those experiences and that knowledge. She is the type of leader that can bring people and ideas together for a better Alpine from now and tomorrow. Now, if you want me to put that into some form of a resolution for our next meeting? Perfect.
Power of law or whatever. As you recall, what drove putting a restriction in place was information that was quoted about employee retention in Alpine, that when asked, the city manager responded, and said, well, I don't know the basis for that data, it was given to me by the human resources coordinator. I think it's important that we council be aware of what's going on in the city, and I find it difficult to believe, or one of the stipulations I would add is, we the council aware of what's going on before we go off to the city. There have been many times people have said, Rick, city manager talked about an item, what's going on? I don't know what she's talking about. So it is, as an elected official, we are the ones elected by the constituents, the city manager works for us. I find it very inappropriate for the city manager to talk about things in open form without us being aware. So I certainly understand and support being able to have dialogue with the press and with the city, but I think, and an important element of that is, we the council, we have to speed on those discussions before that occurs, and we have not been asked.
Okay. What I'd like to do is, at this point, on the table, this particular discussion item, unless there is a question from anyone in the audience or support realigning regarding this second?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Angie Velmures. I recite 1703 North Fifth, which is 41. I, I agree with what he's saying, because I myself used to go to this regional meetings that we have, and TML meetings, and everybody gets together and discusses what's going on in their cities and so forth. There's, there's nothing that she can do that's going to make Alpine look bad. In fact, it might be even better, because she's going to get ideas and all this different stuff. And also, let people know that Alpine, hey, they've got a good city manager, they've got a good council. Look at them, let's go visit Alpine or whatever. But this business of keeping her quiet, I think is nonsense. And then there's always just one councillor that does all the talking, the radio, everywhere, the newspaper. I don't agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more? Yes, sir.
Oscar Cobles, Word 5. I know there were some meetings that were going on, arguing the committee with the city manager, and all, everything is great, but I think one of the things is, going back to the TML meetings that Mr. Olivas mentioned, you know, this is a common practice, this is nothing new. The interaction is always, has to happen among TML. I've been in a TML here for a vacation, and it's everything awesome, it's really good. But I think we need to move in those areas that are productive in some areas. And what I'm going, in this, reference to this, is that TML conferences, and we're coming out on this and that, it's, I hope we're coming out with productive areas of improvement, but what I'm saying is that, if we're going to bring in the media for this and for that, we better be progressing in some of these areas of irresponsibility. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
Yes, and no other comments, and what I do move is that we table this particular action item until the next agenda.
Okay, so, so there's a motion. Table it, there's a second. Okay, motion, second, and we're going to have some discussion on, to table this motion. All those in favor, at least, right hand? All opposed, like that? Okay, motion, can table it for the next meeting, to get the proper verity, right? Okay, let's move to item two.
Okay, item two. Okay, item two. I move that we take action. There's decline or review in all quarters or resolutions restricting the mayor from full participation in action as a chief elected official in the city of Alpine according to the city charter versus the government code.
Okay, is there a second? Oh, second. And a motion, Dex. Okay, item three.
So, item three, and assisted with our procedures and policies. You will see in your package, a copy of the employee grievance policy that the city attorney drafted. It is listed, has listed as Section 12 Employee Grievance Procedure, as would be show up in the employee manual. As such, in order to get the dialogue going, I move that the city council approve the employee grievance policy that is included in the package for immediate inclusion in the Alpine City Employee Handbook.
I'll second.
Okay, most have been made in second. I've got a question. Is the portion, I talked to Mick about, for an employee when they grieve anything, that they should have representation, not representation, a witness, because we're not a bargaining forward entity. Is that been put into there? I was going to talk to Mick, is that, at this point, he hadn't been able to look at it?
So it is not, as you recall, when we took an executive session, you had the action to go work it.
Right, and I talked to Mick, that's been done.
Two weeks hasn't been done yet.
No.
And I just want to move this thing forward. I agree, I think we all agree in the executive session that it makes sense to go work it. So, gosh, I gotta go do something. I had committed in the executive session to draft the words. Not everyone was comfortable with that, so mayor, you had it.
Right.
I, I think we want to get the employee grievance policy implemented as quickly as possible and easily make an amendment to it.
Okay.
So that's why my motion is to approve it.
Yeah, it's just a minor.
It's a minor act, but I do, we know we wanted to work the employee handbook, as council was talking about that. We can pick that up quickly. I think the grievance policy is.
Mick, do you think we could have it by next thought?
Mayor and I did discuss the, perhaps adding to a portion of the grievance policy that at certain stages, when employees bringing forward their grievance, that another employee be there just as a witness, and we can certainly add that language if you want to later.
All right. Yes, sir.
I do have a comment. When we, at the last meeting regarding the grievance process procedure, we did agree that we would provide our input, our comments, opinions, suggestions, deletions and whatnot, submit to, first to the mayor. And I did make my own, my own comments. What do I do with them? Now, that's my question. Do I submit them to you, Mick, for your consideration?
Well, what I tried to draft is what the council's directed me to draft. If you want some additional information in there, I can certainly do that. But I suppose your comments, councilmember, are for the rest of the council more than me.
And I think we had agreed that we would make some suggestions on there, and I would forward to Mick. I've just got my emails back online somewhere. They got changed on. So if you give it back to me, I'll give it to Mick, and we'll just add them to it. Okay?
And actually, Mick, if I may say, the procedure is what I have to admit, and it's none of, because we're talking about city employees, some of the text was a little bit legalese, I guess.
Yeah, some of it was legalese, because I'm a lawyer.
Yeah.
We can certainly, we can certainly work on that. I mean, I understand what you mean.
Work on you as a lawyer or the language?
Probably at this stage, both.
Okay, so most have been made in second and more discussion. Seeing now, all is in favor, each other hand? Opposed, like so? Who cares?
So we have a new employee grievance policy.
Correct. Okay, city council, commission, and so few.
It was great to see everybody here, a lot of people today.
I have a couple of comments to make. One is, thanks for coming. This is the biggest crowd we've had in a long time. Yeah, also to extend, they're very happy July 4th holiday season's a-awful. Be careful out there. If you're going to be celebrating July 4th, a court day that's at 10 o'clock on July 4th, the Jeff Davis Historical Commissioner is going to be dedicating a very special marker to one section of town, which we call Chihuahua. And Chihuahua is the actual, if I may say, where both Andy and I were born and raised, as well as Genevieve Baca, and quite a few other noted people, including a World War II hero, Manny, Sergeant Manny Fontes. If you have a chance to stop by 10 o'clock on July 4th, come join us. Also, I'd like to announce that on July 11th, we are now organizing a very special town hall meeting. This is going to be focused on award to folks or residents, but everybody should be invited. And the main focus will be, as we brought out in discussions today, that we seem right now to have a sort of a functional situation with the city government. And so what we're going to focus on is to share with people the morality of events for today that have led to this. Invite us right then if you can.
What time?
It'll be around, we're still in the organization stage. We're looking maybe around afterward, 5:30, 6 o'clock.
Where?
Here?
No, it'll be, we haven't decided yet.
July 4th?
They love it. They love it.
So my sense is, city secretary probably will post that as a meeting that council will attend.
We've got three of us announcing me.
That's what I said. Well, that's open to all citizens.
Award two?
I said a ward two. What do you say?
A ward two, there will be a general invitation.
So if we come, we're allowed to be there.
But there won't be a regular council meeting. I would have to debate that when.
Well, no. If there's greater than, if there's a form or more, she has to post that to occur.
Whether it's a reception or a public meeting or.
And where is this meeting right now?
It's still in the planning stages. Right now, it just delayed it.
City Council posting on the vote in board and the newspaper.
It's still on the website as well.
And on the website. Okay. Councilman Unison.
It's settled.
I want to thank everybody for coming. I, we have a lot to discuss today. And thank you to all of you that stayed.
I wanted to thank y'all for coming, and I hope y'all stay and see what else continues to happen.
Yeah, no, thanks very much for staying, and my sense is, I look forward to seeing you all continue on, as we continue on.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much for attending, and I wish everybody a happy July. Also, oh.
July 10th?
Yeah, a little. July 4th. Be safe, and we're also going to have a 1941 fire truck, which the street department worked on their own time refurbishing it. It looks awesome. I went up to the west Friday, I think it was, to look at it. It looks like a brand new fire truck, upholstered, repainted, the whole nine yards, and everything is functional on it. So it will be in the parade. And one more item, we have Forma. We went to a Forma meeting last Thursday in Van Horn. Forma is a, is a company that lobbies for, say, local city governments. Very crucial, especially now when the state is trying to limit the cities and how they govern themselves. The state's folks will lobby for us for certain things that affect our well-being in small towns. One of the members that she was Texas representative for a number of years, so she does have the ins and outs of who to talk to and whatnot. So very important, and that day is going to be July the 10th, and we have the county commissioners' court. And what time is it? Nine o'clock, right? Nine o'clock.
And the agenda's already posted.
What's that?
It's already posted.
It's already posted, okay. So those that can attend, council, I strongly recommend that you do attend. This means very crucial, and it's very important for the well-being of our city. Nine o'clock. Just turn it around. You like to. So thank you all very much again. Y'all have a great evening.
So, Mr. Mayor, I propose that we forego executive session directly to action items for the executive session. So please be quiet. We're not done yet.
We're not, we're going to go straight back into regular session. We are going to forego executive session.
That's the motion.
That's the motion. And is there a second? Okay, all is in favor, each other hand? Opposed, like so? Okay, for this motion, and one is.
Who wants to go?
Councilman, yeah.
Okay, there are a number of items that we have on the executive session, action items, there are three of them. Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I start that now?
Yes, sir.
The first one is for us to consider action regarding the resignation letter from the director of finance. I know that council has seen it, or she sent it out to council. And she followed up on others on the 19th of June. On the 26th of June, she sent out another to all of us that says, at this time, I'm requesting my resignation withheld, as I do not indicate a final date in my initial resignation letter, only once on the notice of intent. I understand that the city manager offered my last day to me this week, four days to transition, is not long enough or adequate for staff of the city. I will continue to serve community and provide a minimum 30 days' notice of my final date. In my view, given what we've heard thus far, and the significant implications of having a finance director associated with our budget, which we are behind, I would move that, having reviewed the original letter and the update, that council consider the resignation withdrawn, and with acknowledgement that, should a future resignation letter come forward, we would take appropriate action.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Most have been made in second. Any discussion on that?
Discussion, not so much a question. Does the college faculty was thinking about buying Roy's handle stipulate that when somebody wants to resign, they have to notify everybody that's on this list? Or should it just be the media supervisor?
Their supervisor, in this case, the widow.
Okay, that answers that one. I find, the second question is, how crucial do you feel that her absence would be to the budget processing that's coming up?
I, I, her position obviously is very crucial. I think from what has transpired since March to now, I'd say that the information is coming from her reluctantly. The participation is reluctant. And so I just need to know, am I going to do it, or is she going to do it? Or are we going to do it together? Because that is not clear. And of course, that just kind of depends, you know, on her willingness to participate fully in that process and communicate with me where she's at and what she's doing and what she still lacks. You know, these emails that I get with, you know, spreadsheets in here, doesn't really answer all the questions. It didn't incorporate all the information. And if we're going to play this, you know, well, you only said red, so I didn't put any blue, then it just makes it much more difficult and much more contentious in trying to get a budget resolved.
How did you guys work together last year? Was it pretty easy to do last year together, just the two of you? Would it be easier if you had somebody else in there just to sort of help negotiate or keep things simple or?
You know, from my, from my part, I've tried to remain simple through the whole thing. It is extremely frustrating when you sit down, have a meeting, say, okay, these are the dates we're going to try to hit. And then when you say, where's this information? Oh, I didn't, I didn't do it. Besides, I'll do it later on. Then I have to come here and tell council, no, I don't have it. Whether someone comes in and mediates that or negotiates that, I just don't know. But it's, it's challenging. It's extremely challenging. And the mayor can tell you, because he's been in a couple of conversations with the director of finance as well. It's, it's challenging to get an answer. It's challenging to get a commitment from her. It's challenging to just have conversation.
And we had a meeting last Thursday. Am I correct?